We'll start in just a minute here. We're waiting to connect with one of our board members that's on video. All right, good evening. I'm Jan Kalk, serving as President of the Board of Education. Very glad to see you this evening for our Board of Education Workshop on November 12th. We are at the Northland Innovation Center tonight for special programming. And I would like to also recognize our Pro Start students that served the Board and Cabinet members before the meeting. And I believe their teacher Sarah Lorenson is here. Would you like to stand and maybe introduce, have the students come and introduce themselves and tell them a little bit about the meal? Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sarah Lorenson, and I teach at Oak Park High School. These kids are in the Public and Commercial Service Pathway, and they are in their fourth year. They are our first group to go through the Pathway program. They are in a new class called Career Development and Entrepreneurship, where they are finishing their Pro Start certification and getting their Certificate of Achievement. I'm going to let them talk a little bit about their menu tonight and what their class is about, because one of our salads is going to be featured in our upcoming event that we're going to do at school.
Hi there, everyone. My name is Roman. This program has really been, it's been interesting. It's been fun, and I think that the last four years have honestly improved. I don't know, from when it started, from the first class that we had to now, it's genuinely impressive to see like the things that everyone here has accomplished culinary-wise and class-wise and everything like that. Even now, we're working to make a menu that our teachers can buy from monthly. And this month, we will be featuring our Harvest Salad, which we did bring today for the board members. It has butternut squash and some, what was it?
Pomegranate.
Pomegranate. Yeah. It's been, it's been, it's been a process, but it's been a fun one, so that's for sure. Honestly, I'm really excited for the rest of this year, and I'm sure that everyone else is too, especially because, I don't know, this, this opportunity is new. It's a new class just started, so being able to experience it for the first time is, it's exhilarating, fun. I'm, I don't know any other way to put it. Really honestly, just hoping to see all the good that can come from this. We've all, we've all been in culinary. I know myself and Nora want to do culinary as a future passion. And I think everyone here is excited to see that the culinary program is improving and, yeah.
You want to tell about the other two salads?
Oh, yeah.
We're going to introduce ourselves. My name's Teagan Hunnold, you know, a member of the Public and Commercial Services Pathway. Been in it for four years.
Okay, yeah. My name is Amy Nguyen. I'm also in the Pathway. And the salad that we made today, the pomegranate salad, it has butternut squash, kale, pomegranate, candied walnuts. It's supposed to have goat cheese, but we didn't have that today, so we substituted with Parmesan, and it's supposed to have quinoa as well. And that's going to be one of the salads on our first menu.
Okay, I'm Nora Martin, and I've been in this program for four years, and I'm definitely very grateful for it, and I would not be the person I am today without it.
Hi, my name's Haley Lynn. I've also been in the program for four years, and it's honestly been such a thrill to be in the class and see what doors and opportunities can be opened through this program.
Thank you. Well, I thank you very much. The salads were absolutely delicious, and your presentation as well as the, your ability to explain them were very helpful as well. So, thank you for coming. I think they're back to cleanup.
Yes.
Now that the meeting is called to order, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Secretary, may I have you call the roll, please?
Ms. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Dr. Ward?
Here.
Ms. Hines?
Here.
Ms. Gleason-Miller?
Here.
Ms. Reinhardt? Ms. Kalk?
Here.
And Ms. Reinhardt, maybe coming in a little bit later this evening. We'll start this meeting with a Champions of Service. It's our pleasure to recognize some special groups tonight, both Transportation and our school-aged childcare group.
I will say, it's always a joy to recognize Champions of Service, but this group is really special because as I read through these, you'll notice that their supervisors really put a lot of personal touch and special stories and details into and what they, what they've said about each person, so I'm just really excited to share with you. We're going to start with our folks from Transportation. We have two drivers, Patrick Gibson and David Ross, if they would come forward, as well as Maddie Jones, who's a bus aide. If they, if you would come forward. I'm going to start by telling you a little bit about Patrick. Patrick quickly became a safe and skilled bus driver when he joined the Transportation team in 2019. He keeps the interior of his bus in showroom condition, inspiring students to take pride in keeping the bus as clean as possible because they recognize Mr. Gibson's hard work. Patrick has also taken on a larger role by working in the office and assisting with routing activity trips. He always has a smile on his face and seemingly never has a bad day. It is universally acknowledged across the Transportation team that Patrick is a joy to work with. His students love him, and just being around him brightens everyone's day. Thank you, Patrick. And Dave. Dave joined the district in January of 2018 because everyone knows spending hours outside learning how to drive a bus is best done at 10-degree weather. But he has become an exemplary driver. Since he started with us, Dave has never had as much as a scratch on his bus, zero complaints of any kind, and consistently provides exceptional service. They've also set a new standard in attendance. The only time he has ever missed work was a week for a special milestone celebration cruise, and Dave being Dave, put his leave request in two years in advance. Dave is the epitome of great service and reliability. Thank you, Dave. And then Maddie. Maddie is a rock star provider for her students on the bus. She ensures their safety and happiness while supporting their learning. Maddie is a hard worker and volunteers to help wherever she's needed. She currently spends her mid-days updating the sub-driver, I'm sorry, updating the sub-driver and aid books to provide continuity and ensure seamless service for our students. Maddie can always be counted on to do more than expected, complete tasks to perfection, and finish on time. We are proud to celebrate Maddie's exceptional service as she marks her fifth year with our district. Thank you, Maddie.
Congratulations on being so exemplary. It's such a pleasure to highlight your service to everyone that you touch in your departments for your commitment to be excellent employees and to make everyone else's lives around you better. So, thank you so very, very much. We so appreciate you. I got the privilege of riding with Patrick on the first day back after winter break. And I'm telling you, he was just the ray of sunshine he was described to be. Thank you.
And that first day back, he knew families' names, he knew younger siblings of each of the families. They were coming out to greet Mr. Patrick, just as much as they were excited about getting back into school or sending their kids back to school, let's be honest. But Patrick was amazing to see in that role, and he's just one example of the people who set the tone for our kids each and every day. They're the first people and the last people that get to see them, and we so appreciate what each of you give to make that happen. I got to do my job shadow with Transportation, and my goodness, just all of the moving parts, the different pieces that everyone contributes to pull it all off is incredible. So, thank you, and we appreciate you being exemplars for North Kansas City Schools. We would love for each of our board members to get to shake your hands, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Before you go back to your seat, would you maybe introduce, if you have someone here tonight with you?
Sure, I brought my wife, Kristy, who also works for the district.
I brought my boyfriend, Justin, my mom that also works for the district, my bus driver who also works for the district, and then my dad.
I have my wife with me. She's in the back.
Okay, next, we have a few site managers from Adventure Club, if they would come forward. We have Sierra Coffin, Tommy Jordan, and Gina Dixon. I'm going to start with Sierra. Sierra is a champion of service for children and colleagues alike. With a calm and compassionate demeanor, she ensures both kids and adults feel safe. A strong advocate of conscious discipline, Sierra is committed to helping children learn how to navigate their emotions. She is, she's even earned the nickname "Child Whisperer" for her talent in connecting with students. Sierra proactively partners with parents and her Adventure Club colleagues. Her compassion has fostered a supportive community for new site managers throughout the district. Thank you, Sierra. And then Tommy Jordan from Clardy. Anyone who knows Tommy Jordan could tell you that she is fully committed to the well-being of students and their families. This year, she became the first Adventure Club staff member to earn the Missouri After-School Network Youth Development credential, underscoring her expertise and dedication. When her program at Clardy combined with Gashlin, Tommy took the initiative to drive to Gashlin each morning to greet her students as they arrived on the bus. This provided great, at Nashua, our Adventure Club students benefit greatly from Gina's service-minded approach. She fosters a sense of community and family by planning activities that teach empathy and compassion. You might find Gina dancing with students at a family night, glow-in-the-dark dance party, organizing a holiday toy donation drive, or teaching students to sew and create their own pillows, dolls, and blankets to take home. Wow. Gina dedicates countless cases while also building meaningful relationships with all her families. Thank you, Gina, for all that you do.
Doing creative work, ended up being just so present for the kids, and I can tell that you help them belong and help them feel like champions, and I really appreciate that. Congratulations.
I know firsthand what value you bring. Both of my boys were a part of Adventure Club as well, so thank you for all that you give. And also know you have a rowdy crew over here. It does become a family and a team, and you can see that so plainly. So, thank you for what leadership. Made themselves known.
Absolutely. I actually brought another site manager with me, Molly Green over at Leno West.
I brought my two assistants, Tina and Tamori. My daughter is here, and then my sister and two aunts showed up. Surprised me. I brought my husband, Brad.
Well, I know the rest of the board members, so I'd love to congratulate you as well. So, thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for all you do each and every day. Appreciate you. Give our guests just a minute to exit. Before the board is in agenda, I would ask for a motion for approval of the agenda as presented. It's been moved and seconded, approval of the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign, and the agenda is approved. We have one workshop topic that will fill the night this evening, and we'll have Dr. Sutton and Kami Neff introduce the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. A long, long time ago, or what felt like a long time ago, in 2019, the Board of Education charged us to boldly redefine the high school experience. But little did we know, at that time, that that charge was going to take us way beyond the walls of our high schools. And that charge has taken us on an incredible journey throughout the past several years, discovering new learning experiences, programs, and opportunities that will give our students a competitive advantage here in North Kansas City through work-based learning experiences and through career exposure opportunities, which just in this lab alone, students are exposed to over 50 different careers. And what's really special is that kids can see themselves in these careers because of the hands-on experiences in which they have, and which you will feel a little bit of that tonight as well. And I just love the graphics. Everything back here is all about dreaming and dreaming big. And so, thank you so much to the Board of Education for allowing us in North Kansas City Schools to dream big, so that our kids can dream big. It's my pleasure now to introduce you to a big dreamer, Kami Neff, who is our coordinator of the Future Ready Lab, and she has done such an incredible job of getting this lab up and running, getting kids and staff in here to really figure this out. This is a huge undertaking, and so much detail, so much work has gone into this, and super proud of what she has already done, and can't wait to see all of that we accomplish in here over the course of the next several months and years.
Thank you so much for that, Dr. Sutton. I appreciate your time. I have my mic on, so I'll just speak from here. I can't thank the Board enough for the opportunity for us to have an experience like this for our fifth graders. Many of you were here just a week ago when we had our grand opening, and so you were able to walk around and see many of the families that were here. We thank the families that have joined us this evening. You will get to partner up with some of our PEG students. They are fifth and sixth graders who have volunteered to join you tonight when they were offered the opportunity. They expressed an interest to come and be with you and to be your coach and your guide on the side, if you will, as we travel along. One of the things that I think is best so far about this evening was to watch your seniors standing here and hearing their version of what they've seen in just the four short years of the pathways. We stand in a very integral part of that pathway. We're giving our students in fifth grade level a capstone experience, if you will, to think about what that next step might be for them. And like Dr. Sutton said, you will see many different career pieces that they have exposure to in this room. It may not be culinary in that way, but no doubt they'll see carryover to that. They'll have their hands on it, and it sometimes might look like play, but it's really applying things that they have learned. And there's no better way to figure out what you want to do than to be able to have those hands-on experiences. So, it is definitely my pleasure to be able to experience that with the teachers that we're working with this year in our pilot, and then to further unwrap that for all of our students in the coming year. So, I want to also give thanks to a few people who have been special to us in helping with that. Of course, Dr. Sutton, but also Dr. Katie Lawson, to Kate Place. Cindy Turner is here as one of our middle school teachers who has helped out. David in Technology, as you've heard, has been a huge asset to us, as have many others. And then we have Andy that will speak as one of our pilot teachers this, this evening as well. What I'd like to do is kind of take you on a mini-experience of what our fifth-grade students are experiencing. So, I'm going to ask you to leave your stations and join me, and we'll kind of walk through, and we'll do a modified version. Before we leave, let me kind of tell you what those parts look like, so you're prepared for that. We're going to start in the entryway. Dr. Sutton spoke to the graphics, and that's a very key part of what we are doing. It brings us closer to our city and the origin story that our students can buy into. So, we'll start in the four-year area, and then we'll be kind of greeted by students, if you will, with some items. We'll take a short look around the room at some of the tools that they have the ability to work off of, and then we'll end with the animatronics with a little bit of hands-on piece before you come back to your seats, and we'll have Andy wrap that up, which is his point of view. So, we'll try and do that as quickly as we can. If you want to join me, we'll meet in the four-year area. Other participants, you're welcome to come along for the ride. I'll be mic'd, so you can hear, but you are welcome to be wherever you feel comfortable. So, as you make your way down, I wonder if you can, you can hear me from here, obviously. It's still through the speakers in there. As you make your way down, just a reminder that the, the process of this is they're coming to two visits for our fifth-grade students, and so they're coming just one class at a time, so that they can have the greatest advantage of having hands-on experience with that. When they depart from the bus, they leave their things down the hallway in the conference room that you were in earlier, and so they come hands-free into this space as they're greeting. And so, there's a welcoming time, and so I'll give you the opportunity to do exactly what I have them do. And that's just to look around at the murals that you see to your left and to your right, front of you, behind you. Take notice of things that you have noticed within the illustrations. Take a moment to look at the readings. A lot of times, fifth graders will point out, "Oh, a timeline," because that's one of the things that they work on in creating in fifth grade, are timelines of their own. But I invite you to just to get a little bit closer, see what things you notice in there, and then I'll ask you. Parts of this time will be just like you're a student, and I'll ask you, "What, what did you notice? What did you want to point out that you found was interesting?" Because please note that all of these murals were created specifically for us. They are not something that we bought stock. They were created to represent our students. So, as you're looking around, taking a moment to take in the graphics, the text, it really sets the tone for our day, and so I want you to be a key part of that from the get-go. You're adults, so we'll speed it along just a little bit. What are some of the things that you've noticed? Portrait of a Graduate Words, yes. And they will point that out, too. And I will tell you, I was told, I'm joining your district this year for the first year, and so I was told they, our students really know the Portrait of a Graduate, and indeed they do. And so, I've been in many of their classrooms, and it's posted, but that's one thing. It's another thing when the students see it, and they own it, and I think that's a lot to be said in just the short length of time that it's been around in that sense. So, yes, Portrait of a Graduate. What other things do you notice? Community and schools. Community and schools. You notice all four of the mascots are in there. Many different icons that they recognize as part of their community. The hope was that they see themselves in this wall, that this is a place for you, that you identify with something on this wall. We actually sit down, and they take a moment to kind of look at it, and we talk about how that this represents students at this age, things that they are interested in. No doubt, you in. No doubt, you saw Penguin Park over there, other opportunities that they might enjoy. And every time, they point out some things that I didn't even notice, or interpretations that they have in that way. And then I say to them, "This represents fifth graders in that sense, and I want to tell you about another fifth grader who came to Kansas City." And so we turn our attention to this wall. They spend quite a bit of time on this wall, and that's looking into Walt Disney. And so as we look at the lifetime of Walt Disney on here, some of the things that I want to point out to you that you probably haven't time to had, time to dig in, is something that tells more about his lifetime. And so if we look at him, I tell the kids, "It's really easy. Do some quick subtraction in your head. He was born in 1901, so all we have to do is take one away from each one of these." And I will summarize for you the things that they would see. This really ends when he is 22 years old. And so we learn, we spend a little bit more time here on maps and that sort of thing, learning that he was born in Chicago, but his family came to Marceline. They came there because of the train. His uncle was a conductor, and so they came for that piece of it. But he has his first experience with animals there. He works with a veterinarian, and he learns to draw those animals. And so at least, now we know how those things first came about. He saw his first movie here, which of course was a silent movie at that time. He saw his first play here, which was Peter Pan, and a lot of students associate Peter Pan with him. And we realized, no, 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 he was taking traditional literature, and he was turning it into memorable stories later on. These were stories that existed, and he took advantage of those things to share. So we walk through this in greater detail, but you can imagine, I've already heard things that students have been interested in, so I'm sure to pick up on those things and incorporate them in what they're doing. But we start noticing that his family came to Kansas City when he was 10 years old. That's the same age that they are, and so they start seeing that piece. He had his first job. He was a newspaper boy, and he spent time working. And so we learned that it's not too young to start a career, if you will, at that time. He also has his passion. He worked with this veterinarian, drawing things. Now he's taking his first class right here in Kansas City. We realize someone that is so well-known started their art career right here in our city, and the things that he did with that. He leaves Kansas City, and time goes by. We talk a little bit about him in World War I, but as an adult, he chooses to come back to Kansas City, and that's when he starts working. And so we, again, go into a little bit greater detail with slides, and how he starts that process, and how he partners up. And so throughout this time period, we're looking at the Portrait of a Graduate. So we're noticing some of those things, that when he doesn't know or he doesn't have the time, he's collaborating. He works with Ub I Works, who becomes the first Imagineer. And we learn that he picks up on different skills and things. And all this story is really interesting to them. There's different parts that they intersect in here, and they start to see themselves. We talk about this building, which still exists. This is Laffgram Studios, and how it was built downtown in Kansas City, and that it still exists. And we talk about how it was designed by a female architect in the 1920s in that time period. But we also learn about his failure, and we learn about the fact that he eventually leaves Kansas City because of the failure of the business. And no doubt, I go into a little bit more detail with them at the time. But we learn about his story of how he's created something that becomes popular at one point, which is Oswald the Rabbit, and then he loses that piece. It gets in a trading-type thing. He loses it, and he has to start over. And it's a mouse that is given the inspiration to him somewhere along the way. There's different legends and tales about whether it was in the office building, or on the train, or whatever, but it is that piece, and it's Mickey Mouse that is his rebirth, that he starts back over again. And so I hope you see in the brief time that we've had here, the amount of things that overlap with starting young, having a career, those inspirations that you had, the influence of childhood. What will this inspiration be? And so for so many of the people who worked on this project, I would ask them, "What do you remember about field trips?" And for many of them who grew up in Kansas City, they would say kaleidoscope or different things like Exchange City, things like that that had a mark on them. Our hope is that this experience will be that mark on them, that when we look at Disney and the experiences he had, this will be something that our students will look back on and say, "But when I was in fifth grade, I had that opportunity for that." Now, I don't expect them all to become animators or animatronics operators, but I hope that they will find different areas within that time period that they can associate with. And then at that point, we make a connection to one of the people who was inspired by Disney, and that is Garner Holt. And so we make that connection from, and I have to do a little hands-on piece here. Some props just to make it a little bit easier for them. One, when we're talking about this, is the actual piece of the building. So I'll pass it around so that you can see, too, to prove that it's actually in existence. But I really found after my first few students that I had to make that association for them of what is animation, the moving pictures, and then how do we then connect it to animatronics in that sense? And so we have a little flip book that we go through, and something from the Walt Disney group that really shows that animation piece for them. And so we think about how, things that I've learned, thanks to the Disney 100 that's in town, I've learned so many things about him being the first to add music to the moving pictures, that he was associated with that. And then years later, with animatronics, when you look up, "Who was the inventor of animatronics?" Walt Disney is given credit, you know, to that. And when we look further, it wasn't always him, right? It was partnerships, and it was other collaboration that worked along the way with that. But I want to make that connection from them, from the print to decades later, that he was continuing to innovate and to come up with new ideas. And so it's later that he comes up with animatronics. And so it's a young person named Garner Holt. And so what I like to summarize these walls being is really our past and our present, and then this is the future. And typically, Radiant is facing them here, and so we play that. And I'll play it for you right now, but I expected a larger group, so I've got him facing out to you. And we talk a little bit about Garner Holt being able to learn as a child, that he went to Disneyland. He was inspired by that. His family let him tinker, come home, play with the items in their household, create his own haunted mansion, his own theme park rides, if you will. And so it's that kind of play and apply that we want our students to have while they're here in that space. I know you heard Radiant the other night, but I'll go ahead and play it again for those who haven't, and we'll get ready to move into our next area.
Hello and welcome. I am the latest and greatest in animatronic and robotics education technology from Garner Holt Education for Imagination. With me, students can demonstrate their learning by creating an animatronic show. By the team, students research a topic, write a script, record by voice chart, and are able to program our 12 pneumatic functions and 12 electric motors. This enables students to experiment with more facial expressions and body movements than ever before. Students can then sculpt our face, create my costume, and add background and props. Now students have the ability to go beyond writing reports and creating PowerPoint presentations. They can create an engaging animatronic show. Welcome to the new age of education for imagination.
What amazing tool to have right in front of them. And so no matter what side you're on, right, you're now seeing it from the backside, you see something new and different in each one. And so the inspiration of how that is put together. I never want to take for granted that our students have already been to a place like Disney World, or that they've seen animatronics. We try and put some things that are in Missouri, whether it be Silver Dollar City, or something at Worlds of Fun, something that would connect with that. But also restaurants and things will often have pieces like this, or museums. And so trying to make a connection with them. They are always inspired by that, and so much so that they're more paying attention to his movements. Perhaps you were, too, but he's actually talking about what they're going to do and the tools that they're going to use. Students typically move over to this area because movement is important for them. We can only stay so long in one placement, so we move over to this area. We won't tonight. But in that space, we watch a video about Garner Holt, his connection to this, and how he started with these basic tools. What you're going to see is a collection of tools that they would use in their factories, that they would use to create an animatronic, that we'd see in any of those locations I just mentioned. As we come around the corner, I want to make sure that you have reference to the different careers. And those of you who are standing here will see those careers that are above us here. Again, we start seeing those connections to pathways, and I haven't mentioned by interns to you yet, but that's become a sideline piece for us that's growing and growing as we see the opportunities this lab is offering. What was once envisioned primarily for fifth graders is now becoming a really key opportunity for older students to come alongside us and to help provide those opportunities with the tools that we have here. And so what you're looking here is those 10 different areas, but then several different careers within there. What we want to do is give our kiddos an experience. And on day one, we want to make sure every child has the opportunity to have hands-on our main item, which is animatronics. When they come on the second day, then they will specialize in one of these areas. As I take you on a very quick tour around, so you can see some of the tools that are in the room, I want to show you some of the products that have been created. Ideally, you could investigate a certain character, and since we've been talking about Disney, we use Disney as a model for us. Dr. Daniels, you might be pushing that green button right on here for me, please, and that. Yeah, thank you, thank you. And so I'd like for you to direct your attention here to the podium. We have several different items on here that represent Walt Disney. And so I'm not going to tell you how they were made. I will just tell you that most of them were made in our lab. And so if you are a board member, I would invite you to pick up one of those items to take with you as we walk briefly around the room. The book and the Mickey Mouse are not included. Those are things that we already own. But if you will grab one of those items and bring it along with you as we visit some of these tools, we'll tell you where they came from. So take your pick. Wizard hat. I know, I would grab that wizard hat. I'm glad you chose that one. I'm glad you chose that one. Now, Mickey Mouse, Dr. Ward, I can't, I can't give him credit. And you may want us to make stuffed animals here, but we do not make stuffed animals. But we do make this, so I'm going to send that one with you. He's just an attraction.
Redirect.
Redirect, right? I know. I would like to learn how to make stuffed animals. We have a couple of other items here. Do you want to take a second one?
Sure.
You'll take that one? Absolutely. Did everybody get something? Dr. Daniels, you want to take one? Everybody else get one? Okay, Susan, we have that for you. All right. So what we're going to do is just kind of show you briefly around some of the other tools that are here. The first one, we have Cindy Turner, who is here, and Cindy has a Fab Lab downstairs. She's been fabulous in helping us. Would you tell us a little bit about why you were so excited about this particular laser cutter?
So this laser cutter is a CO2 laser cutter. It'll cut wood, some fabric, paper. It does a lot. It's a lot. It's a very versatile tool. This has been really helpful down in the Fab Lab in that kids can really take what's in their imagination and make it very physical. And so this is one of the tools that makes this happen. I have a job set up here, and it will take 38 seconds to run this, so it's also very fast. Now, some projects obviously are going to be more intense than that, but it is ready to hopefully go here. So again, just being able to make it tangible for the kids, making it hands-on. Okay, I got something messed up. So anyways, that is what this tool is about. The platform's also very big, so their projects can be big, little, or in between. So this is, again, a great tool. There's a lot of design that's actually associated with this. I have to design all of this in Adobe Illustrator, and so understanding how that works, how to pull it into the computer, design it so that it has the right specifications that tells this what to do. So there's a lot of different pieces to this. So it isn't just the actual cutting, it's the design. And there's a lot of failure with this, which I love. First attempt in learning, so that is something that we practice a lot.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody think they have a product from this machine? I think you're holding something from that. That's a good guess, because it's wood, but it's not that one. You're exactly right. That one is the entryway into the parks at different Disney parks, about leaving your world that you're in and entering different areas. So that was created right here on the laser cutter. So yeah, we won't make you carry it all the way around. If you want to leave it there, you can. The next machine that we're going to talk about here is our vacuum form machine. And so I think we have it heated up here to work. We do. I got him there. Can I pass that back to you?
So these are projects that they take, uh, or?
That's to be determined. Though right now, we're still, we've only done phase one in that sense, so of what products we'll actually be able to, you know, send home with them will be a little bit different. We just covered up the molds that are in here. And so what we want you to see is this, it's got heat up here for just a moment. So we're very fortunate to have a machine like this, and that's forming plastic into different shapes for us. This is a key part, and I want to emphasize this one to you, because this carries over to the sparkies that you're going to be working on. And so if you look, sorry, we're having you turn around a lot here, but if you do look behind us, someone already has something in their hand that looks like the sparky. Ms. Jan, is that you? Yes, it is, right there. This piece is something that we work on. And Andy, I don't know if you want to speak to that just a little bit. When they first visit the lab, while half of the students are working with me on the sparkies, that tells us we're about ready here, half of them are working on fraction face, and Andy's class has already worked on this, so I'll let him summarize that for you.
Yeah, so we came in and we really looked at, as students look at these animatronics, what's one thing that they see? The first thing is the face. So when they develop these different robots, they really take a lot of time in sculpting the face. That's where a lot of expression comes from. So when we sat down, part of the, the day that we came, part of the group started with the animatronics, but the other part started with me, and we started working with faces, and we looked at facial expression. That's really your gateway to the soul, right? So the face is made up of fractions, and so we took our time to look at how that fraction is partitioned through your face and through trial and error. You know, students develop all kinds of different faces. You saw some of the models that we have there. And the plan is now taking what we've learned from fraction face and now putting it on the molds that we have with Model Magic or some sort of clay, and taking that time to really do that sculpting, because we're very limited on the amount of mobility that the face has, but the way that it looks is super important. And so the fraction face was our first step towards that. And then this next week, my class is actually working on our second trip to the Future Ready Lab, and one group is going to be working just specifically only on faces, makeup, hair, anything like that. And so a lot of trial and error, but I will say, you know, adaptability powered through, especially for myself. I am not a sculptor at all, but I had a great time doing it, and my second one was much better than my first one, so, you know, there's always trial by that.
I like that. Hey, and you were perfect on the time here. We have just, it takes about two minutes for this to warm up. And so what we've done is we've heated the plastic. Usually, I'm talking to the kids about molecules and that sort of thing. It's looking like it's not quite ready. I don't think we're going to get anything out of that. It's still pretty hard. We'll come back to that in a moment. But what it does is it actually creates the face in there, but it's still warming up. You're not sure you turn it on?
We're not sure we turn it on, right?
It's all right. That's all right. So in an ideal, that's why we have this. It's like the cooking show, where you bring it out of the oven, and like, "This is what it would look like when you do it." And so these are the faces, and then you can envision those fit on there. The kids are very excited in round two to do that, and that's where the careers start coming out. So we start, we have makeup, we have all, everything very official. So it's very, I mean, you may look at it as play, but it's very much, it's a makeup palette that they use. It's, we ordered some wigs yesterday. It's the weirdest order ever, right? We're ordering childhood wigs for these small things. But each of the kids are taking on those roles, and they're working on the costuming. I'll let you know that we have students coming in next semester that are interested, they already know how to sew, and they're interested in costume design. And so they'll be joining students in that way. So that's that crossover that we're talking about. So this is an important part, so you to see that first visit and the second visit, the artistic part in it, but also the math, because that's what the STEM element is in there. I am cognizant- Yes, so it's the same class. Andy's class was here for a full five hours. They went, you've been gone for, what, maybe four weeks? You've been working on your research for astronauts?
Finished our science unit up, and so we have about a week of prep time. And so we've kind of looked at how we could divide the work that needs to be done in the different groups, and it's very much like what Garner Holt does, you know, 50 jobs for one thing, right? And so we've divided our groups into script writers, and we've divided our groups into animatronic programmers, and to costumes and makeup design, anything like that. And the plan is putting all those pieces together to form one end project. So what that's going to look like, we haven't seen yet, but my students have already been here for a full day. We were here from, you know, 9:30 to 3:30 almost, and just nonstop learning each section of the Future Ready Lab. And by doing that, they came back to the class filling out job applications and using a lot of the Portrait of a Graduate language of what's going to, what's going to work in their advantage, right? What is it that they are really good at? And everybody really got what they're looking for and wanted. So today was really day one of our prep work for the future next week. And again, it's going to hopefully come together really well. I have high hopes, because they're working really well together as teams. And my other teammates, each one of us are kind of taking a section. So I'm working with animatronics. My teammate is working with costume design, and then another teammate's working with script writing. And then we'll put everybody back together and then work towards an end product. So that's kind of how that is thinking for the future.
Great interpretation of it. And the whole idea of what our teachers are already working with in our students, how can they show their learning in a new and different way, in something differently to have the output. I'm cognizant of our time, and I want to make sure that you see the other tools that we have. So let's do a quick spin, because we have our guest helpers that are ready to teach you. So we'll make a quick trip down here and look at some of the other fantastic tools that we have. Someone had a piece of wood, and this one is a wood cutter. If you are familiar with CNC machines, there are people who have this as their job, and we have a CNC machine right here. Who is my person who had another piece of wood? All right, my friend, this is you. This is you. This one I went ahead and included. This one we had some difficulty with, and I include it because it's a failure. And that's important to note. Not everything that we do in here is going to work, and we sometimes sugarcoat things for our kids, and sometimes families do. And we sometimes sugarcoat things for our kids, and sometimes families do as well. We want the best for them, right? But we have to have them adaptable, and we have to know how to bounce back from that. So I did not replace it with something that was better. I just said, this is an important part of what we do in here. Sometimes things won't work, and we learn from those failures better than we do our successes. But this one is a CNC machine, and it will mill wood for you. You no doubt saw the other day some of the other fantastic examples that we have done on it. Let's move on down here. We talked a little bit about sewing. We won't show that. That's fabulous machines that we have there, but would fit into that category. Anybody know what we have here? Looks like a refrigerator, doesn't it? That's what the kids say.
Looks like one.
It does. It does. So this is a high-definition 3D printer. And so this is something that's going to get very specific in your 3D printing, specific enough to have little threads on here. And I tell the kids, I know you've got jars of peanut butter at home, you're not impressed by that. When you think about two pieces that are shaped together in here, and they fit together, that is the definition of high definition. One of the things is you're walking around to note or next visits that you have, the signs that you see on the walls and sitting around focus on how the tool is used, but it specifically talks about the four different pathways. So that you will see different things in here that's used in for science and for automotive and various things that you might not anticipate. Who thinks they have something that is high definition?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs? That is it. That is the castle, one of the models of, one of the castles from the theme park. And if you look at the detail, I would let your other teammates take a look at that, because the attention to detail is exquisite on there. As we move on around the room, you can probably see somewhat from where you're standing, we have several other tools from just your basic carpentry tools, which we've used several of, whether it's measuring the wood that goes into these items, levels. I used a wrench the other day for some of the things that we're doing, just some basics that kids have, because we need them to know how to use a ruler and that sort of thing as well. We have a fantastic embroidery machine here. Anybody have an artifact? Yes, you do. Yes, you do, Dr. Ward, with the embroidery there. And so being able to do patches, embroider onto shirts. This is a tool we're still learning on. It's a pretty sophisticated piece to use, and so they have people who will train us on that even more. As we move along here, more traditional, the heat press. I don't think I had any pieces for you that I handed out for heat press. Vinyl printer, someone had a small example of that. We had those as pickup ones. Vinyl printer, someone had that. Sticker making is a good thing here. And then we got the sticker. Dr. Daniels has a sticker making? Yes, yes, yeah, sticker making. And then we have what we call our everyday printers. They're certainly nice, but this would be your more prototyping one I had. If you walked by here during your earlier meeting, we had another little bowl being made over there. So it's some basic ones. What you have, though, as a piece of evidence, is not too basic. Who has one from, yes, you do. That one is the wizard hat from Fantasia. And so if you turn that over, it's interesting, the fill that it has, so it's actually using two different types of filament in there, and that can be taken away so that it has an open space. I left it so you could see it, just for the fact that you will see on here that there are two different types of filament that are in there. So no doubt, kids have the opportunity to make things that are in practice, that are creative in that sense, and you see the potential for including our high schoolers and community members through the different tools that you've offered to them and give them the ability to use. But the heart of what we're doing here is the animatronics, and that is the piece that links all of that together. And that's what our fifth and sixth graders really want you to join in on. So let's direct you back to that section. You will find a name tag with your place, and they're ready to show you the slider bars as well as all the things that make these sparkies come to life. All right. Adults, we have spaces for you on stools, and your student helpers are nearby. Let's see. Who did you have in yours? I was going to say, he doesn't have anybody. Your name was down here somewhere, but we can put you on him. David, would you mind angling that, so they, maybe they have a little bit better view on that? So our students are going to coach you through, and students, I will kind of help you in reminding them of what our sparky stands for. Maybe you can remind them of that. And they might ask you how they run. Do you remember how many motors they have? 10 motors. And how many motions do they do? Is there some sort of correlation between that?
Yes.
10 motions, 10 motors. Do you remember the name of the motor? It is electronic. That's a good one. That's a good default answer. Servo is what it's called. And do you remember, we talked about that they're actually in your car? They're in the door, right, to put the window up and down. And I have one in this box here, because we had one that malfunctioned, but you can kind of see it. It's a smaller type motor, so 10 of those that make them operate in there. So today, we're going to walk you through those 10 movements, if you will. Let's tell them a little bit about why we use a slider board. I think that you guys got everything set up. Is that right? Thank you so much for doing that. That kind of expedites what we are doing here. Let's talk to them for just a moment, if you will. Friends, tell me where you landed. Is this a good place for me to start? Are you already all green?
Yeah, we're all green.
Well, aren't you awesome? Thank you so much for having them all green. You did, but you bounced back. But you got it going. But you got it going. I'm very impressed with that piece of. Can we stop for just a moment and talk to them about why you have a laptop as well as a slider board? And you can just tell them individually. What do you remember about the slider board? With the on and off versus a slider? Would you just tell them individually how that helps? Fifth and sixth grade friends, can I direct you back to the slide? And would you give them a little tour of the dashboard? If you do not have your screen and your dashboard in what we call the view that has all the different versions instead of lines, could you move it back to this one? And we say to look for the protractor or the rainbow there. Would you move it back to that version, so they can see what it looks like in that moment? And then once you do that, would you show them one of the movements, so they can monitor that on the little dial and watch how that correlates? Now, depending on how much time we have, sometimes we bring out the math in this, because when we talk about angles, that's a fourth grade standard, and so it's really easy to see the application of that, of how they are wanting to move in that sense. We don't have time, we don't take the time to address that. So fifth grade friends, would you start kind of walking them through? And would you make sure that it is on live? And if I said fifth grade, I meant fifth and sixth grade both, because you know I'm used to fifth grade all the time. Our PEG students, would you make sure it's on live? And then would you start demonstrating for them, and maybe let them walk through some of the body movements? And would you make sure that you're intentional about showing them why you might do two sliders at the same time? I'll turn it over to you. You advanced? Dr. Ward has a good question, and I was going to mention that. As you're seeing their involvement, and I too am impressed by them, they have spent less than two hours on this device. They've been here three times for assorted pieces, but for their culmination, because their close proximity just being downstairs, they're able to come up. So they've come up for three short terms. But as I stand here accumulating it, it really has been really two hours, maybe a little bit more than that. But you can see what they're already picking up on and their enthusiasm. And no doubt, it doesn't take long at all before they've outpaced me, and they're teaching you, and they're teaching each other, and that's the best part of it. And that's the best part of it. So as we move along, I want them to point out just a couple of other things. One, it already has an audio track recorded, but on their second visit, they will record their voices, as you heard Mr. Moran saying about that opportunity. They learn much more about how to slow it down, make the mouth move it, and then how to speed it back up again. We've taken a lot of time to learn about how to record, and I heard some of you demonstrating that. And so one thing I'd like for you to do with your group before we finish up, would you please show them what we call that heartbeat that shows something has been recorded, whether that be with the mouth or with another body part? Again, not with your voice, but with recording something of the motion. Are you on record? We just have the disadvantage of being the only one in your group here, so you don't have another video. So that one with the mouth should do it, and when we push this here. I hope you enjoy your visit today, as you explore so many STEM careers. There you go. Not only will you get a chance to program animatronic like me- Yes. Sound effects, lighting effects. Fifth and sixth grade friends, let's wrap it up. If you're in the presentation of it, let's let it run through, but not restart, so we can bring it to a close. Anything else that you want to share with them? As we wrap up tonight, we're going to finish up back at our seats, but a couple of things I want you to take a look at, kind of the next steps. And I've heard many of you saying, hey, can you add other sounds to it? Yes, you can. Can you add lighting to it? Yes, you can. And so we think of it like a hamburger. So the narration that is in there is the base, and then we just keep adding different layers. And you've seen, literally, the students have showed you those layers that are in there. The layer of mouth movements and head movements and arm movements, and then we can add the lighting to that. And then that becomes more personal for kids who are interested. No doubt, we have the professional lighting here that they can accelerate on and go as their interest, desire, of things that they want to learn on, and that they can dig deeper into. I'm going to play one for you here that is centrally located, just to show you a finished product from our middle schoolers. But when you put items together with sound, with video, you get something like this. Now, I'm noticing, not to confuse anybody, Rosa Parks was not a doctor. That just happens to be the costume that she has on there. We have a limited amount of costumes right now. But you see, in just a very brief way, how you're hearing the narrative about her, you're seeing pictures, you're hearing audio, all of that put together. And I think our kids and our visits have hopefully shown you what that potential looks like when we bring all the elements together. And when we do it in an official way for them, we'll have Mr. Moran close here and tell you a little bit more about what that looks like and what that sounds like when they take on those roles. So if we could return back over here, appreciation to our fifth and sixth grade students, you were fantastic helpers in that way. I'm going to check in with yours, Nora, really quickly. Let me suggest to you that we change all of them to record. Sometimes that helps. Let's see. Can you just do any motion for us? So what we did with this one on the end is we just restarted it. And so if you want to stand here and see if you want to restart it, close it out and restart, actually, the expert for that is this person right here. Would you show her how to restart on it? And if you don't mind, Nora, we're going to let them return to the meeting, but if you want to progress on that, you are welcome to do so. Thank you for your patience, and thank you for your visualization as you think about all those pieces together. For me, as an adult mom with adult children now, I look back to my fifth grade, the teachers that my children had as fifth grade teachers. And I look at the careers that they have now, and they discovered them in fifth grade, unbeknownst to them at the time. They had hobbies and interests that their fifth grade teachers, different teachers, different schools, but both of them had an interest that have led to the careers that they have now as young adults. Their teachers did not know how to do those things. It was back in the day when PowerPoint was new, and so they let them do that. It was back in the day when green screen was new, and they let them do that. I point out to you, one of our teachers, Andy Moran, who is in that group, and I don't mean to diminish you, Andy, because I think you're on the same track with me, we don't, we're not the smartest people in the room. We don't know everything about this. And that was the same thing for my children's teachers. They didn't know. They turned it over to the students, and they let them fly with it. And so, again, we thank you for the opportunity to put tools in our hands that we may not know everything about, but we know our kids are going to find out about that. And that journey of how to learn and how to relearn and how to apply it is really what we're about. So we thank, we are so thankful for partners like Andy. We have pilot teachers in all four feeder paths that are joining us. He's from Ravenwood, and so he's going to tell you and wrap up for us tonight on what that looks like.
And before I turn it over to Andy, isn't it, it's hard to believe that she's only been with us for like 16 weeks. Her knowledge and enthusiasm, Cammy's, for this. And I know she's spent so much time on weekends and above and beyond, just the energy that you bring into the space is just, it's contagious. So thank you for all that you've done and for preparation and tonight.
It's a gift you've placed here, and we can't ignore that. And so thank you for the opportunity. So it's worth, it's worth working for, these kids. And when you see their face, please come by anytime when we have them. I'd love for you to see their reactions and their products, so.
I'll turn over Andy, and really appreciate Andy and just his leadership as one of our fifth grade teachers at Ravenwood. Andy, as long as I've known him, is a big thinker and innovator, and I know it's fueled by the kind of work that's happening up here. Just so proud of him for taking the risk and getting his kids in here and trying to figure this out.
Thank you very much. I mean, the buzz is in the room, right? It's really evident. So when you start bringing 10, 11-year-olds up in here, you know, imagine the buzz that they already have, the ride, the anticipation on the bus, and getting off here, coming up to the third floor, riding the elevator was a big deal, right? So just getting into the room, and we didn't come straight into the room. We went into the back room over here, and you could tell everybody's trying to poke and see what's going on in here. And so the excitement, anticipation is really there. And then finally, you know, as soon as we walked in, there's a lot of the oohs and the ahhs, and everybody's eyes went into a different direction. And that's what I absolutely love about the Future Ready Lab, and there's something for everybody. You know, some people had, we were kind of selling it to the students as robotics and things like that, and you know, have a lot of students who are, okay. But as soon as they came up, they go, oh, look at these embroidery machines. Oh, my grandma has something like that. Or, oh, my aunt has a shop that has one of those. And they're making these connections to all these different things. And one of the big takeaways I've had with it so far is the amount of abundance that people can have and what career path they want to go in.
Right. Thank you very much. That, there's something for everybody. And we kind of said that before, but there really is something for everybody.
And we kind of said that before, but there really is something for everybody in any, any one of these fields. And I started thinking about the connections to our pathways, right? And it doesn't really matter which pathway you're going in. What you're wanting to do is going to affect something larger, right? A bigger scope. And aside from that, you know, we really put an emphasis on our portion of graduate. And today, when I was talking with my small group, we pulled out our competencies. And I said, can you give me an instance of our trip when you did learner's mindset, adaptability, communication? I mean, just, they were rattling them off so fast. And this project here, or this is, this space, really is giving those students a pathway to the future. And in the 45 minutes that my students got to spend with the robotics, you know, I couldn't, I couldn't do it. I really couldn't. But my son's a fourth grader, and I've talked to him about this. And this is, I mean, I'm getting goosebumps thinking about it. This is his bread and butter. This is what he wants to do for his life. He wants to be the CEO of Apple. And this is where he's, this is where that kind of thing starts. It really does. So they've really found love and interest. And the moment we got onto our bus to go back to Ravenwood, there was already the talk, when are we going back? When's Miss Neff coming back to us? We want to go back. And I said, actually, we're going just in a few weeks. And Miss Neff's gonna come and help us plan with this. And we're gonna figure this out. Well, what's that gonna look like? And so everybody's asking all these follow-up questions. And you know, it's just, we're working on it. We're gonna have a wonderful project. And so, you know, the first steps that we've taken this week, really to start producing some sort of a project. Everybody, everybody, there's no, there's nobody trying to drag people along. Everybody is excited about what it is they're wanting to do. And so really, the Future Ready Lab has been a wonderful asset for those students. It really is a step forward into the future. And there's things in this room that's going to develop that beyond belief in the future that we might not know about. And these students having their hands on it and getting that experience right away. You know, I start thinking when we had our first computer in a computer lab back a long time ago at Crestview where I was at. You know, one computer in one room. But now, everybody has one of those at their desk all the time. So I start thinking about the future for my students and the future for North Kansas City, really, you know, cutting the edge. There's nobody else around doing something like this with Garner Holt. So it's been a fantastic opportunity. And I just cannot wait for what it's going to do in the future for our students. So if you have any questions or anything like that, I'm gonna stick around for a little bit. And I'm gonna turn this back over to Dr. Sutton.
Thank you, Andy. And with that being said, we'd be glad to take on any questions that the board may have. Kami could probably be the best one to answer most of them.
I don't have any questions. But I love nights where my face hurts from smiling so much. And this is one of those nights. My face is gonna be sore in the morning. Thank you so much for this. This is just amazing. I also thought during the evening, I kind of wanted like one of those little bells where every time a competency was mentioned or succeed. I would just want to be like ding, ding. But then I would have been dinging all night. And it would have been really annoying. So maybe it's glad, good that I didn't have one. Because I just think that this covers all the bases. And it's so great to see because I was kind of right there with the students, like, oh, you know, that'd be cool, like animatronics. And that's awesome. And yay, I mean, was really excited for it. But when you get here and you really see everything that's available and all of the different ways in which this addresses so many different types of industries, it's just very exciting. And your excitement is key to the success of this program. So thank you so much. It's very, very great.
Our one intern is graduating, but she still wants to be an intern. I posed that to Dr. She said, can I still be an intern even though I'm graduating at semester? So satisfaction. I'll give you some numbers. We have about 82 fifth grades this year. That's about 1,700 students. So when you think about the number of students and teachers that this will touch, that's a lot of, that's a lot of kiddos. And that's a lot of futures. That's a lot of ideas. That's a lot of excitement. And I will tell you, as you heard from Mr. Moran, our parents are very excited too. I have, I have met different parents. One of our technology parents was up here today talking about his daughter's excitement, and she's in fourth grade. So word is out, and our parents are very happy that their students are able to experience something like this. So again, our thanks to you for the opportunity to give them that.
Thank you very, very much for this. This was awesome. And thank you to the students who've already left. That was awesome. So my oldest is 19, and he's at Missouri S&amp;T. And he's, he's did a lot of robotics in high school, and he's studying nuclear engineering now. And he was so angry when he found out that this opens and that he was already graduated. And so I'm wondering, is there gonna be any summer programming? Or are there any opportunities for students who may have missed it to come back and intern or help out?
Absolutely. We're putting those things together, and I'm sure it will look different summer to summer. But for this year, I really want to prioritize some of those students because we will not see every fifth grader this year. At the time period, we were still doing doctor work last week. You know, so we're trying to squeeze those in. And so we knew that, starting with our pilot. We'll increase more, more people. But we will offer that opportunity as my hope in the summer that some of our students who were current fifth graders can come in for a summer experience, starting with that. And then maybe, if it were possible, maybe we can go back and catch some of those middle schoolers. And definitely the opportunity for high schoolers. That need is growing and growing. And that's, that's an area that I didn't know I would enjoy working so much with, but I really, I really do. And seeing them being able to exercise that and learn some things too.
Well, in 1985, when I was a teacher at Winnetonka High School, teaching computers to juniors and seniors, I really thought we were cool. This redefines cool. That's all I can say. And we pushed it down to the fifth graders and what great opportunities. I just have a real quick question to teachers, yourself and the teachers. So what Chad and I witnessed was some problem solving. Didn't quite work. I would have panicked as a fifth grader. But he was like, I'll problem solve this and make it work. And he did. So how much training did you as the teacher coming into this environment have prior to the students coming in?
Little to none. Honestly, little to none. I mean, I've had, I've had my hands on some of these things before, 3D printers and things like that. You know, we had one at Ravenwood for a while. And, you know, just some of my experience with like things like cricket and, and just my own passion. Like this type of thing, I have a passion for. It's something that, it's important to me. But with that said, at this scale and this level and these versions of these machines, I've never seen. So starting with those little building blocks, those basics, has been really important. But then, as soon as you show a student where the on button is, give them 15 minutes and they're, they're running it. And I still don't quite know how to run them exactly. And so it's just exposure and having my students, giving them the opportunity to teach me. Because that is where the real learning happens, right? Is that opportunity to teach somebody else. And so I know when we come back next week, I'm gonna be hovering around them. I'm gonna be learning as much as I can about them. And, and the students, they're pretty, pretty good. They're pretty savvy when something goes wrong with them. They're also really good at making things go wrong with them on purpose and problem solving through that too. So we've seen some of that as well. But I mean, again, learning moments happened. So yeah, I didn't take too much. They, they are very adaptable.
Thank you.
Susan, did you have a question?
Can you all hear me? Yes, can you hear me?
But just a minute. We'll get the mic over closer.
How about now? Can you hear me now? A little bit better? No?
If you say it, I'll repeat it. How about that? I'm miked.
So I brought my fourth grader and a couple of her friends to the open house a couple of weeks ago. And they could not stop talking about the experience that they had. They were super excited. So a question that I have for my fourth grader is, she really wants to program a dragon. So will you have any animals or other mythical creatures that you can add to the mix or whatever, whatever they're building?
That's a good question. We have, the, the sparky works off of that baseline. So to say that our costumers could get on that and our makeup people could get on that, I'm quite sure that we could develop that into a different. It would probably have to be a standing dragon if we can deal with that. But I think we have the ability to costume and makeup and form a face that could allow that to look like a dragon.
Thank you.
Big dreamers. Keep dreaming. We'll come up with ways to solve it.
I just so appreciated the students showing creativity, support of each other, collaboration. So many of the skill sets, problem solving, as you, as was mentioned. And just active thinking in terms of making it work. And they weren't quite sure exactly how to make it work, and they made it work by the end of the time. So that was really interesting to me, to watch them work, work together and bring their smiles out. I also appreciate the fact that you are modeling the learner's mindset as the teachers here too. And just being so open to learning from the students. I think that must leave a very strong impression on them. And I really appreciate that that is part of the experience here. So thank you. You're really bringing a gift to our students and a really excitement and commitment to this program. I really appreciate that.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Great tour tonight. What fun.
Thank you for your flexibility.
Full of possibilities. Anything else? Then that concludes our meeting tonight. Thank you so much for coming. What a, what a nice evening.